I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning board of appeals meeting on Wednesday, December 11th at 7:05 PM. The only agenda item is continuation of case for the public hearing for J E H Realty, Real Estate Investment Company, LLC, 40 Depot Street in Douglas.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I want to let you know that I did see this whole meeting last month. So I listened to the whole thing and I'm up on it.
Okay. Because you weren't in attendance.
No, I was not in attendance.
Very good. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
And one other announcement, we have an excused absence from Mr. Holland. And I'm not sure Mr. Tassino's going to make it or not, but it was yours.
There were four voting members this evening.
That's correct.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to you, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Rob Knappick, and it's a pleasure to be before you again on behalf of the applicant, J E H Real Estate Investment Company. And with me is the applicant, Mr. Hasty, and his architect, Gary Boyer. And as you know, this is the second or continued session of the public hearing for a special permit application for the property at 40 Depot Street. At the last session of the public hearing, we presented plans to you, both architectural and a site plan, showing partial reconstruction and new construction of the building, which, as I'm sure you know, was damaged by fire. And pursuant to your bylaw, in the event, in such a case, the landowner is allowed to reconstruct, but if on anything but the original footprint, then only upon receipt of a special permit from your board. And here, as we explained, the construction is on something other than the original footprint. And part of it, the project includes keeping the front portion of the building, which was not as badly damaged. That's the more, you know, probably culturally and architecturally significant part of the building. And demolishing the rear part of the building and replacing it with what we propose to be five new townhouse-style dwelling units. And that, it's those five new townhouse-style dwelling units that are on, other than, that are not on the original footprint. So at the last session of the public hearing, we explained that, or we probably didn't explain well enough, that, you know, the applicant did have several options, as anybody would in such a case, once the building was demolished and once he got some sense of what reconstruction costs were, what, you know, insurance was going to pay for and that sort of thing. And the choices were many, but among them includes demolishing the entirety of the structure and replacing it with what, I think you, Mr. Chairman, said last meeting was probably seven units as, maybe as of right. So that was one option. He chose this option. It does work economically, but he also feels that there's a benefit to the town in preserving that front part of the structure. But, you know, it does come at some cost. So we explained to you that this option, adding the eighth unit, replacing seven with eight, would allow him to renovate the front section, make it code compliant, provide for fire suppression, you know, a quite costly aspect of it, and still, you know, do the project in a way that makes economic sense. So you expressed some concerns, and among them, I think there were two that we heard. One of them expressed by the board was the density, for lack of a better word. That was sort of boiled down to bedroom count. And that makes sense, that bedroom count be the sort of metric that you view the project in, because that's how your bylaw is set up. In other words, if this were vacant land and the applicant proposed to build something, it would be so many bedrooms per square foot. So we explained that initially, the, or prior to destruction, the project had a certain number of bedrooms, which I believe was 15, it was, in seven units. And the plans we submitted initially showed eight units for a total of 19 bedrooms. And that included the three three-bedroom units in the front, or mansard section, and five two-bedroom units. So what you have before you, and what we worked on and submitted since the last hearing, is a revision to the plans, reducing the number of bedrooms by three, from 19 to 16. And that would result in all two-bedroom units, which we hope responds to your concern about density and your concern about the potential impact on services and schools and the like. So as you see in the chart on the second page of the letter we submitted, pre-fire, there were seven units, 15 bedrooms. We now propose eight units, 16 bedrooms. I think, you know, the upshot is a net gain of one bedroom. So we hope that that responds to the concern about density. The other concern we heard was particular concern about headlights splashing onto adjoining properties, which, you know, does seem a valid concern, given that cars exiting the parking lot are, you know, for at least a time before they actually exit, are pointed toward the vital structure. So in response to that concern, we modified the site plan to show, we initially considered a row of trees, arborvitae or the like, but on the advice of a landscape architect that, you know, over time, they might grow in such a way that it could affect site distance, he recommended that the better option is actually a fence. So what we've shown on the revised plan to respond to the concern about headlights is a fence in this island. And as you can see, it's situated almost ideally, in fact, ideally for screening the glare of headlights from cars exiting the parking lot shining on that adjoining property. It can intersect perfectly, really. And then as cars turn and exit, then they're not pointing at that structure. So those are the modifications we've made. I won't go through the reasons why we think that the project meets the special criteria, because I did last meeting. I respect your time. It's set forth in our letter. But I will simply repeat that we do believe that the project meets the special permit criteria. And we also believe that we've responded to the concerns of the board and the butters. So we would respectfully request that you issue a special permit. Thank you.
Okay. Any board members have any questions on the applicant?
Well, we'll go back to your discussion on footprint. And I think I mentioned that it would be nice to see, actually, the original footprint and what, with an overlay of what it would look like. And I don't, I don't see that in any document, new documentation. I didn't see it in the old.
Gary might be able to respond to that with the plans that he had.
Good.
I believe it is dotted on the plan that we submitted. It may be a faint dotted line. Let me see if I can trace that out for you here.
Thank you.
This is the existing portion of the structure to remain. And the wall of the existing to be demolished continues in a dotted line here along the parking lot to a corner. I'm sorry. It turns the corner this way and then up and across. So that's the existing footprint.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's helpful. I've taken a couple of rides up there. Sat in the parking lot for a while. So how far will the end of that last building be coming to? Oh, there's Martin Road. I see it over there. Yeah, sorry.
Martin Road is here. Yep.
It's blown up by a mist.
Do you know how far it would be?
One-eighth inch scale. How far from what to what?
From Martin Road to the nearest unit?
To the corner. Bring along my long scale. Fifty-seven feet, roughly, from the corner of the last unit to Martin Road.
And you're planning on leaving that back spaces, green space, towards Martin?
Yes, I believe that this is part of the civil engineer's drainage system back into this area. And the owner chose to, rather than have an on-grade drainage ditch, he wanted to have a playground, if, something that would be much more appealing to the residents and to the neighbors, rather than looking at, you know, some kind of a fenced-in drainage retention area.
That's all good. So I have a question. There was one more concern, and it had to do with behavior of, you know, apartment dwellers.
Well, we don't.
I don't know what the police procedures are. I mean, this is an apartment building down the street, you know. And this is, in its essence, a high-density living area also. But you're into a more residential area, you know, back off the street. And I wonder whether or not, just a conversation with the police department, to have them check it out, to try to keep things, you know, tapered down. I mean, what we heard last week, if you, well, and if you watched it, you heard, 2:00 AM, you know, noise.
Again, it's something that we, as, we don't have any control of it. But again, if you could do, the police department, go to the houses, stuff. What I see of this is, it's a wicked improvement, because the old building that was there, I'm sure when the firefighters got there, they had no background of what was inside. And I'm looking at these units now.
Oh, yeah.
Squarely, they're straight, and, you know, and it's fire-protected between each of them, and having the fire suppression there.
Safer.
Yeah, much, much safer. It's just, and again, we can't control the police department.
But if I could interject?
Surely.
I'm Jim Hasty.
Thank you.
And I own the property.
Yep.
You ask about, you know, the police. Obviously, we're right, you know, we're about as close to the police station as you can get.
Yeah.
Although I can't control my tenants, there are obviously certain ways that you can, in essence. And I say that because one of my options would be, has anyone ever heard of the village over in Northbridge?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. I think I know the answer, just from what I've heard. But the reason why the village is probably the village is because that's all low-to-moderate income housing, Section 8, the majority of it, and it's subsidized, guaranteed payment by the government, where the tenant pays a very small percentage of the rent each month. The government provides that. Could I do that right here? Absolutely. Could I get more money for rent? Absolutely. Would it come with single-family, you know, one adult, several children? Absolutely. These are the things, I don't discriminate, but I choose not to. And the reason why I can by law, okay, is because I can do query reports, I can do credit reports, I can make sure they have security deposits. There's a whole host of things. I, as a landlord, which sometimes you don't have many options as a landlord in this state, try to prevent letting certain elements into my apartment buildings. So when someone says, you know, there are people at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, can it happen? Yes. I've been a landlord for 30 years. But I will tell you one thing, you have no idea. Go down to the village on a Friday, a Saturday. Go down to the village tonight. And if you sit in that parking lot, like you were sitting in my, I hope you have a gun and a bulletproof vest. And I'm only saying, those are the options I have to meet. So people are going to say, well, why do you want the extra unit, sir? Simple. Economics. Money. You want a nice building? You want the aesthetics? You want the historic? Well, I have to get civil engineers. I'm sorry. Well, no, the...
That's the other big ticket.
Who's the guy, yeah, who's the guy we hired? You hired?
Structural engineer.
Structural engineer. Because we have to demo it. Now we have to, you know, we have to preserve that. We, if we, you know, we have to bring in the fire suppression into a 100-year-old building. I mean, it's, the costs are ridiculous. It's, you know, I've talked to a company called Seven Hills Foundation. I don't know if anybody knows. It's a nonprofit. Again, it's a nonprofit, but Seven Hills would come up and gladly, you know, buy the property. I could give them a 20-year lease, but you know what's going to go in there for the next 20 years? Do the, do people really want that? So, you know, I don't say be careful what you wish for, but be careful what you wish for, because that's something that can't happen. And I'm not trying to threaten anybody. I'm just, it's economics. That's all it is. It's going to cost a lot of money to replace that building. I wish the fire didn't happen. It did, and now, you know, it's a burden. Insurance companies only pay $10,000 for code upgrades. Just that fire suppression, it's going to be six figures. So...
Exactly how much of the building was destroyed? Was it, I mean, was it a piece and then?
It's 50%.
Was it 50, really?
Yeah. Maybe a little less. We think it was less, but...
Well, I mean, I understand that constructing and planning and whatever, you know, you have to make some decisions.
Technically, technically, you know, Mark, Mark's in the back of the room, the building inspector, and, you know, technically, there was water damage, you know, and smoke damage throughout the building.
Sure.
So, yes, it's not like we're saving half and there's no work to be done. There's still a ton of work to be done in those units. So it's, yeah, it's...
It was just curiosity on my part.
It's, but I'm just, and I want people to be aware of, it's not just like, hey, it's a money-making scheme. I mean, listen, I don't want the headache of, I'm not going to say, I don't want the headache of Section 8, but the good part about Section 8, guess what? I get a check every single month. It's in my bank account. I don't have to worry. I can just take my checks, and you know what? You guys deal with the cops. The tenants deal with the cops. I don't have to deal with it. I live, you know, 20 miles away, hands-off. Let them do what they want.
It's under your house.
Yeah, right. Exactly. So, you know, that's, you know, and you say that. And I live in Upton, but I let, I tell everyone in my tenants where I live, and they'll drop the checks off to my home.
Good.
These are, you know, people I'm not afraid of coming to my home and bothering my family or kids. Those people, forget it.
Do you plan on selling these as condos later on or townhouses?
No, because if, it's a good question. And I thought about that. And that would make sense, but with the three units in the front, you couldn't do it, because it's stacked.
Yeah.
It's not marketable. So, you know, how would you do it? You couldn't really cut the building and have it sell four units and rent the three. You know what I mean? Because it's one deed, unless Rob can work some magic. You know? And we could have a three-unit and then four units and so five. No. The answer is no. I mean, my kids are going to own that property. So I want it to be a respectable, nice property. You know?
Any other board members have any questions? Okay, I'll open it up to the floors. Is anybody in the room that would like to speak on this application? Ma'am?
I'm Suzanne Carrier. I live at 42 Depot Street, right next to the rented property. I'm a little nervous here, so...
No, you tell.
My concern is privacy. We are right up against, this now is going to be a bigger, more busier place. What can you do for us for...
And again...
Let me just say one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
We've never had any problems with Mr. Hasty. He's all, his people, for us, anyway, have always been good. But our bedroom...
And I'm at 40 or 42, so you're the one right?
Yeah, right next to you.
Next to the parking lot.
Yeah. So our bedroom and our, and our living room are right on the side.
I remember, because we talked when I was putting his driveway in. Okay, that was you guys.
Yes, okay. I'm sorry.
No, no, no. So, I mean, you know, I know, and Mark, I mean, I'm sorry, Gary, the architect could probably explain, because I know they want to put some coverage, specific lighting, downlighting, but it won't carry over to other properties. I mean, it's not really my area of expertise. But, you know, like you just said in the past, I'm a hands-on landlord. And, you know, I own property all over Oxbridge, and if you mention my name, I'm a type of landlord that, I think this gentleman would attest to it as well, because we had our differences in the past over, you know, snow removal, that I'm in, I'm a get-in-your-face, you know, take-control kind of a landlord. I'm not the landlord that just is down in the village taking checks for a living and letting people live like animals. That's not how I operate. Could I make more money? Sure. I don't want, A, I don't want you to have to deal with that, because what if you, you could be my mom, or my aunt, or my sister? I wouldn't want them to be like that. Any apartment I own, I would personally live in. And I will give you every address of every property I own right now, and everybody on this board can take a ride by.
My question is, can you do something about the privacy? That's basically...
I mean, Gar?
Is there any fence there now?
Yeah, no, there's no fence.
There is no fence there now.
Also, the garbage is right against our, dumpsters right against our property, too, right?
Yeah, the trash bins.
Yeah.
So Gary, this is your property?
That's our property.
In here?
Yes. And what you see is greenery, is high trees, definitely no shrubs.
Oh, yeah, but you also cut down a lot of those trees.
So, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they were trimmed back quite a bit. But, you know, that's not greenery, it's just, um...
Mr. Chairman, it's worth noting that the board can impose conditions, of course. So a fence, if it was agreed to, is something the board could impose. There's no question about that. And that may be something worth exploring. However, as I mentioned last time, this is only the first step of a two-part process, meaning that, permitting-wise, before Douglas boards, meaning that if this board does grant a special permit, then the project is still subject to something called site plan review in front of the planning board. So site plan review is an opportunity for the town and folks like yourself to focus more on details like lighting, landscaping, drainage. The town engineer would review the details of the plan, et cetera. So as I said, you know, if a fence is something that's agreed upon, then that's the sort of condition that this board could impose. If it chose to, but even if it didn't, there's still the site plan review process.
And to answer your question further, yes, could I put some arborvitae's or something? A vinyl fence, I don't think would make sense, only because, again, from a snow removal...
You know, that's a site plan review.
Oh, okay, all right, so...
I just wanted to put my concerns.
Yeah, I think...
I just wanted to, because we're right there.
Yeah.
We see that, those pictures of the house, we see that every day.
Yeah.
Every day. You know, we see that.
I'd like to do something.
No, you already answered it.
Oh, okay. All right, is anybody else would like to speak? Sir?
Kevin Josie, 15 Martin Road.
Okay.
My question was on the fifth apartment building being put in, whereas my driveway on Martin Road, basically, the setbacks, I believe, on the first side is 20 feet, I believe. So from, from my side entrance, main entrance of my, my building, would be approximately 30 feet from the back of that last building. Whereas before, it was a field, it just seems like it's very, very long compared to what it was prior to the fire. As far as square footage per unit, I'm assuming it's at least doubled from the previous, from the fire-damaged units?
I think they were all different.
Do you know what the square footage difference is between the existing building and this post?
Six thousand. The existing you have in your document, right? We have an area summary on drawing number one. Existing to remain, 3,475 square feet. The new connector, 534 square feet. The new addition, 6,000, I'm sorry, that counts the basement, which would be 6,184, not including the basement. 6,184 for the five townhouses, two floors. 534 for the connector, existing to remain, 3,475.
Does anybody else like, did I answer?
The original building is about 60...
I'm talking to him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I have very little tolerance for people interrupting, not being a, not, hey, sorry.
I just, is it excessive to go from a 6,000-square-foot building to almost a 10,000-square-foot building, add-on to? I mean, apples to apples is what's being replaced to what is being passed.
Yeah. And I know, I mentioned at the last meeting, I was less concerned about the bedrooms and more concerned about the number of units. Because the units are going to attract more adults, which means more cars, more traffic for the neighbors.
Right. And with, with my house being there, it's a single-family rental with small children there, and just the sight of five new decks within 30 feet of their front door and being two stories high, whereas we're down low, it's just the privacy and just everything else that comes with it. AC units, what, not in the back? If there was going to be any, I don't know.
Anybody else that would like to speak? Ma'am?
Karen McInerney, 44 Depot Street. I just want to understand that the bylaws say one bedroom for every 5,000 square feet, correct?
I think that was it.
Yeah, you get a certain number of bedrooms, and then it's 5,000 after that. So they, actually, for 19,000, I mean, sorry, 19 units, they need 95,000 square feet.
With the square footage of the property...
It's 33,000.
33,000. So talking about a 300% increase.
Correct.
That seems a bit excessive to me. I understand, you know, it's great that you're offering to take it instead of 19 bedrooms and make it 16 by changing the main building from three bedrooms to two. Are you talking in regards to moving walls or removing doors? Because, I mean, I know when I was renting at one point, you know, there was a bonus room, and, you know, we just put the door back on, and then we had three bedrooms.
Yeah, no, it's not like that. I mean, you could see we changed the plans, and, you know, wall, stud walls and stuff put up. Like I said, in the big picture, we're adding one room. Yeah, are we adding more square footage? Obviously, because that was a death trap building, just, it was just old. I'm assuming, you know, 100 years ago, it may have been a single-family home of sorts, or maybe a very wealthy family back then, I don't know. But...
I could respond directly to that, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
The renovation, gee, Gary will, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the renovation to the plan converted what was bedroom space into enlarged kitchen dining.
Correct.
So that not really lends itself to... And also, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So you're right to point out that the bylaw does determine the density based on the area, or as Mr., as the chairman put it, to do, to construct this many, a certain number of bedrooms, you need a certain number of square feet. And that would apply if this were new construction. But in addition to that provision of the bylaw, as we said, there is a specific provision in the bylaw that recognizes, I think, cases like this, where you have a building that's demolished by fire or other catastrophe, and there's an interest in reconstructing it. And the bylaw specifically says you can construct on something other than the footprint if you meet these certain criteria. So it's that provision that this application is made under.
Okay, so it's not in regards to it being non-conforming prior to the fire and then being more non-conforming after the fire?
Well, there is yet another section of the bylaw that deals with a non-conforming structure and an expansion of a non-conforming structure. Like most bylaws, they say if you want to expand a non-conforming structure, you can do it, if you meet this certain criteria. But even that's not the section of the bylaw that we're applying under. It's a specific section called, I think, reconstruction after catastrophes, or something like that thing. And it seems to match this exact situation. Thank you.
In that bylaw, the, you're allowed to reconstruct the exact same footprint, on the exact same, which they're expanding that footprint. So that's one of the reasons they're here, as well as wanting an additional unit more than what was there.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure I completely understood.
Yeah. Anybody else like to speak on this? You know, there was also was a question last month about the water main. Did you look into that?
That's right. What was this question exactly? Capacity?
It wasn't clear if the water main was, what side... It wasn't clear if the water main was, what size it was, that it was capable of the fire suppression system.
No, we did not look into that specific question. I wasn't, I didn't leave with the impression that that was an issue. I think what we said, actually, I forgot what we said. I think we looked at the plan. And the plan does show the water main in Depot Street, and because there are hydrants in the lake, I think we were under the assumption that there was adequate capacity for one more unit. But again, it is, you could condition, if you chose to issue the special permit, you could condition upon proving satisfactory capacity. Even if not, I think through the special permit process, the town undoubtedly would require a hydrant flow test or that sort of thing. Or confirmation of the size of the main and confirmation that the proposed service going to the building was adequate.
I had a conversation with the water and sewer superintendent, and apparently there's currently two meters going on that building. And he said if this went through, he would like it to be reduced to one meter.
One meter, one water main.
I mean, I actually could see the possibility that we'd need to, one for the old building and then one for the new structures, but I can see why. Sure. Again, would not be, is that site plan review issues then, looking at all of that?
Oh, may very well be. I'm just, you know. Mentioned.
I don't even know if it would go to site plan review process. I think that would all be strictly to the water department.
Okay.
I think they would govern whether or not you have one service or multiple services going into the building.
Right. I agree.
If you tried to feed that many units with one service, it's not going to be a one-inch main coming in. So they would have, they would have to consider that.
Any other discussion on this case?
Oh, I'm encouraged by the new, the new proposals in writing. Bringing things.
The only concern that I had at the last meeting was addressed was the number of bedrooms. Basically, what was done is, if you, if you look at his pre-fire, he had seven units, three three-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms and two one-bedrooms. Now they're all going to be two-bedroom units. And you're increasing it by one bedroom in one unit.
Instead of the unit, that new unit would generate probably two vehicles a day.
Right.
Which there is a neighborhood concern about.
There is, but I think that that's been addressed with the screening option. I guess you could ask the person that brought up the issue if that's, if he has any issue with the proposal, and maybe that would be helpful. Can I ask him?
Sure. Sir?
John D., forty-three Depot Street. Yeah, it might take care of the lights, but it doesn't take care of the noise, the coming and going, the doors slamming, everything else going on over there. Doesn't take care of that, it increases it. The fence may cut the lights down, but it's only part of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a. It's been an apartment building for a long time.
Seven-unit apartment building. Sir?
Again, my only concern is that extra unit on the end. It just brings it that much closer to my property. That much more closer in my face. Other than that, I'm fine with the situation. It's just that one extra, I don't know exactly how long that, that last unit is and width. But that's just, if it's fifty feet, it's fifty feet further away from my, my property. That's.
It looks as if it's be like sixteen, the addition on the back to the last one?
Yes.
It's sixteen feet wide.
Sixteen feet wide, okay.
Well, that's the width of the unit, John, but if you look at.
But where he's talking about is the drivers.
But if you look at the, this is his house. So if you look at the distance from here to here versus from here to here.
He's talking about, because he's back here.
No, you're on the side, aren't you?
What's happening?
You're in the back.
I'm in the back left, yes, and the main entrance of the building.
Oh, this one?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And the main entrance.
Never mind, I thought you meant the other house.
The main entrance is on the left-hand side, on the side of the building.
Yes. So that's what he's talking about.
Yep.
Sixteen feet wide. So those units were sixteen feet wide?
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Make a motion to pause the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, a little motion by Mr. Mombara, seconded by Mrs. Holmes to pause the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is called. Board want to move forward with the decision, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special permit for forty-four Depot Street, which is a odd number. Yeah, all right, two thousand nineteen dash twelve. Adding all this paperwork to it, we got some of the plans, the prints, because they got to be.
So the motion is that the original building be two-two-two and that five additional units.
Plans they gave us tonight.
Yeah, right, tonight, okay, so the date, right. December, whatever.
Was this date changed on the new plans?
It's a revision date.
Yeah.
Fourteenth of November?
Yes, on the bottom of the.
Oh, all right, I see.
Is the motion complete?
Uh, yeah, as far as I'm concerned, yeah.
Would be the date of the plans of fourteen November two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
I'm starting to check, but the site plan is December six.
Yes. Yeah, I got that in the sense of revision.
Oh, revision, okay. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Mombara, seconded by Mrs. Holmes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, Gary, four to zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
In our conditions.
Add conditions?
Add conditions to.
Oh, with the fence.
Yeah, that is concerned about lighting.
That's all going to be on the planning board.
No, I know, but it still is a group.
Pass it, pass it, put it on our, and then let the.
The dumpster's right up against the property. That was going to be tough to hide the dumpster.
I'm getting oil.
Yeah, I don't know if it's the.
It's sitting right up.
When I was a. When I went over to second time. I just took a second look at it.
I don't know either.
Argued with myself enough.
Be down there, it's going to be this weekend, I know, and he said after.
I guess. Draft something.
Put on the findings.
The findings, right, exactly.
Concerns of.
You guys are trying to drive me crazy.
One for the dumpster, the other one, some sort of screening.
But they still have to go.
Yeah.
To his property.
Yeah, then they also represent themselves by attending the.
The planning board, yeah. Oh, they're going to be getting the three cars again.
Need to exit, please. We have the minutes of November thirteenth meeting.
I read them already.
They took a vote.
Do we have enough to vote on them or we got a table?
No, we've got enough of John D. vote.
Well, he only watched.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, I watched. Jeez.
Doesn't have no mention of a pen in there.
No pens.
I didn't see that either.
It was a plural.
I wish I had a meeting scheduled for next.
Actually, there's a revised. I hope they'll punch him. She likes you best.
Yeah, yeah.
What was the change?
Actually, the November eleventh is actually Veterans Day. So we're used to the room is available the following day on a Thursday.
All right, rather than going totally off, do the same week.
Probably the town hall is probably closed on Veterans Day. I hope so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Have my holiday.
All right, so we'll move our meeting till the twelfth? This is fine, it comes and goes, so.
On Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday to twelfth.
December ninth, I had something that day.
We're still on camera, I can't do it.
Make a motion to approve the meeting schedule for next year?
Revised meetings together for next year?
Absolutely.
All right.
We'll change them on.
Motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by.
John.
Mr. Mombara, to approve the revised meeting dates for next year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What are we doing this thing?
Purchase of chairs, we're supposed to vote on that or make some recommendation for our board?
I recommend that we get our chairs cleaned.
Second.
Yeah, it's a thorough wash, it's all really comes down to. Make sure we do it just before we meet. So, the decision is not to replace them.
Not to replace them. Yeah, do it on a Tuesday at five o'clock.
And it's still dripping.
So, thirteen?
I make a motion to adjourn.
What wait?
We have a couple.
What wait?
Nobody talks a lot, I figure.
You're breathing.
Do you have a pen?
I don't long mine out that too valuable.
Can I sign under your name? Do I have to sign over here?
You can sign wherever you'd like.
I'd rather put them in order.
How you going on? Unit back.
Mr. Chair, I got a question.
Yes.
Did you, are you, you're not putting any conditions on that?
Yes, we are.
What?
On the.
So, so you're going to put conditions on after?
No.
On the send-in to.
In the finding, when we do a decision.
Follow it to the planning board.
So you don't have to do that in front of the applicant?
No.
I'm just asking, because they have a right to dispute the conditions, don't they?
We're recommending them on behalf of the people, that's what.
Recommending them, but they're not.
No, we can, we can require anything. I mean, it's.
A condition is a condition.
Yeah.
What?
They agreed to the fence that's in the front already.
That's part of their.
It's already on the plan.
They agreed to, yeah, part of what they did from last month to this month.
And they changed.
They acknowledged, they acknowledged the screening of the dumpster for the adjoining neighbor that was going to be taken up. So it was discussed for the planning board.
But we can, we can still make a condition of this approval that it be enclosed.
Yeah.
By a fence, a structure of some sorts, or it's not just a dumpster sitting out there. We can do that as well.
They recognize what we were saying.
And.
I'm just asking, because usually.
We have conditions for your decision.
We talk about the conditions before we leave the table, before we let them go. Tell them our conditions.
Right, but usually there's not another meeting or another committee or board that has, that has control over that. The planning board has control of the site plan review.
Yeah, but you can put, impose any condition you want.
Right. So that's what we're going to do and recommend it to the planning board, I think.
You know, I wasn't here, but I watched the meeting, but I mean, everything that they talked about.
They were here.
Yeah, they adhered to them.
As long as it's listed out, so I.
Yeah.
So you're going to force it. So why don't we discuss that? We're going to require a fence in the, when they exit the parking lot, so that.
Yeah.
There is.
The neighbor had a concern about the dumpster and that, I think should be closed in.
There's concern about the runoff, the site plan review is going to change a lot.
Yeah.
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 He doesn't have the, he could have the ability to change how those decks are laid out and stuff, so. The plans could change. So.
Yeah, I know, it's almost like.
It's almost like the meeting's the.
Almost, it'd be almost joint.
Yeah, well, it should have been left open until they're both closed and they both work back and forth. Like you do with the con-con, if they want to move a building back or forward.
No, no, because we're within the building envelope of what they're doing. So there's no dimensional requirement, all we do.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
We voted on a special permit to allow them to rebuild, and that's when our job stops. The rest of it is all taken up with the site plan review.
But we can still condition the special.
Yeah.
And I mean, some people had some pretty valid concerns, I mean, we want a dumpster next to my house.
The lighting thing is, was a condition that was discussed, and they changed their plan to include it.
So, should we?
Were we going to?
Are we going to?
No, do we want to word it as enclosing the dumpster or screening of the dumpster? Why would we want to enclose the dumpster? No, I'm just, I'm just asking, because if the neighbor's only concerned about seeing the dumpster, then I would, I would think that we would condition it for screening for the, for the abutting neighbor. Versus specifically enclosing it. If they choose to enclose it, they enclose it.
Well, right, it's ease of use as well, you know, I mean, it's for the apartment owners to use, so. You know, some people get to be slabs if they can't get to something easy.
I'm not going to see it from where I'm at, I'm just asking, I'm just asking the question. And then the concern came up of being able to see it from the abutment.
I mean, most times with multifamilies, the dumpsters are enclosed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just sitting out in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Or sitting up against the lot line.
Yeah, that's right. I know, I'm just asking a question, that's all.
We know, Mike.
So should we make a conditional enclosed dumpster?
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
Now, if the thing overflows, hopefully it stays inside that. And that isn't necessarily the landlord get control sometimes if people overfill it. But at least if it's inside of a fenced-in enclosure.
We're getting blown around.
Stuff will stay inside there instead of. There's a new house being built up by my, some of the job on air conditioning guys have, I have two mattresses in my neighbor's house. Just drove and drive, we backed up, threw them out and drove away.
So we have the screening fence at the entrance, the enclosing of the dumpster, and do we have anything for that abutting neighbor on the far left-hand corner?
I don't think there's anything you can do. The structure that he's beside was a two-story. It's still a two-story, it's a little closer, but I mean, I don't know.
Oh, it's fifty feet closer.
Fifty?
Yeah. Right, yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, three units. The old unit ended here, one, two, and three, and the house is over here.
That's why I'm surprised the size of these are, should we, should we talk about this? Yeah, no, I mean, it's. The apartments are, I mean, the units are sixteen feet.
Yeah.
You know, so. They're not condominiums for sure, big condominiums, they're small.
Interesting design.
I think all this stuff's going to come up with site plan review. I don't think we need to...
There was enough people here that they'll stand up.
I think they're going to address it.
Did we do the minutes? Or am I crazy?
We did not do the minutes yet.
I love that we approved the minutes as presented.
Can I second it, because John was in here?
I can second it.
I have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. Call in favor? Aye. Minutes are approved as written.
Meeting, I'm going to see, move to adjourn, adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
You may now all sing me happy birthday.
All in favor?
Aye.